I would like to call this Village Board Meeting of Thursday, May 1st, 2025 to order. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Miratato.
Here.
Trustee Pocack.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance, two and a half, of the United States of America, and in a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening prayer by Glendale Heights Police Department Gikens Lindy Porson in honor of National Day of Praise. Mr. Gikens.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we gather together on this World Day of Prayer, we lift up this meeting to you, seeking your divine guidance and wisdom. Grantify us clarity of thought and speech, allowing us to communicate effectively with one another. Help us to work together harmoniously, respecting each other's viewpoints and contributions. As we come together in a spirit of unity with the world, we invite your presence to permeate our discussions and decisions. May your wisdom illuminate our minds and hearts, guiding us to make choices that align with your will and bring honor to your name. Father, bless our time together and unity together, not only for ourselves and our constituents, but for the whole of humanity. May the outcome of this meeting reflect our glory and serve the greater good. Empower us to discern the best course of action and act with integrity and compassion in all of our endeavors. Thank you, Lord, for your faithfulness and forethought. May your peace reign in our hearts and minds throughout this meeting, uniting us in purpose and strengthening our resolve to faithfully serve you and one another. In your name, amen.
We now move on to petitions and communications. Community announcements. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the Village President and Board will be this Saturday, May 3rd, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Village President or Village Board, please call the Village President's office anytime at (630) 909-5302 or contact your district trustee. Register today for the Village's e-newsletter. On the first Monday of each month, we will email you information regarding the month ahead with news from the Village of Glendale Heights, various programs, events, and other important information. To register, please visit the Village website at www.glandalehighs.org. If you have any questions, please contact the Village's Public Relations Division at (630) 909-5350. Thank you.
Our Trustee Siddiqui.
Stop by the Sports Hub on the first and third Thursdays of each month for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tania Mako at (630) 909-5459. Summer is just around the corner, and the GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend beginning on May 24th. Purchase your pool pass now and through the end of May and for discounted rates. Benefit to becoming a member including priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team, registration, pool rentals, and more. For more information, please contact Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. Throughout the month of May, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no-parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Street parking is not allowed Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find your zone, please visit the Village's website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Trustee Schmidt, please. I'm sorry, Clerk Schmidt.
The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Leisure Services Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357.
Trustee Miratato, please.
On Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day, at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park, we honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving their country. The Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 will conduct a fallen warrior ceremony, followed by wreath flaying ceremony. This includes a flag and color guard presentation, rifle salute with patriotic acknowledgement. If you would like to help voluntary to help plant American flags on Thursday, May 22nd, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Veterans Memorial Park, please visit the Village's website at www.glandalehighs.org. Each flag represents a fallen soldier from Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Endurance Freedom Afghanistan. For more information, please call Jessica at (630) 260-6060. Please note, in observance of Memorial Day, Village offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th.
Trustee Pode.
National Police Week begins Sunday, May 11th and runs through Saturday, May 17th. To commemorate this week, the Glendale Heights Police Department will be handing out blue ribbons for residents put on their vehicle as a symbol of respect to those who have laid down their lives in the line of duty. And to show support of law enforcement, officers protecting our streets. May 15th is National Police Officers Memorial Day, and we hope you will fly the blue ribbon on that day as we honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving their communities. Blue ribbons are available at the police department. For more information, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070.
Trustee Schroder, please.
New Village stickers are now available to purchase. The new vehicle stickers must be displayed by 12:00 a.m. on July 1st, 2025. They must be displayed on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are now $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18. And trucks with a big plate are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weight. The Village is now offering a new forever vehicle sticker for senior citizens age 62 or over. One free forever vehicle sticker is issued per qualifying household and does not require an annual renewal. For more information regarding Village vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000.
Thank you.
Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the month of April as sick awareness and appreciation month. A proclamation to proclaim the month of May as motorcycle awareness month. A proclamation to proclaim the month of May as building safety month. A proclamation to proclaim the month of May as mental health awareness month. A proclamation to proclaim the month of May as Asian-American and Pacific Island Heritage Month. A proclamation to proclaim May 1, 2025 as National Day of Praise. Next, a proclamation to proclaim May 1st, 2025 as Global Love Day. Number nine, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 4th to May 10th, 2025 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Ten, a proclamation to proclaim the week of May 11th to May 17th, 2025 as National Police Week.
If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Any objection from these honorable trustees coming and going? No, none. Okay, next is a public discussion of agenda items.
Mayor Number 11.
Number 11, Village President Recognition. Chodri Coker is me. Mr. Flint gave me a very big page, you know. Oh, okay. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the many residents, my family, and all Village employees who have supported me during my time as Village President. It has been an honor to work alongside you each day, and I have had the privilege of getting to know many of you personally through our shared commitment to the Glendale Heights community. I would first like to thank Connie Brayers of the Glendale Heights Kivanes Club and Glendale Heights Public Library Board. I have known Connie for many, many years, I believe at least 10 years, and her dedication, no, 15 years. Her dedication and countless contribution to our community have made a lasting impact. I also want to extend my appreciation to several Village employees whose hard work and dedication to our community have not gone unnoticed. Tania Mako, Jeff McCumber, Tom Bialas, Doug Flint, Bill Polling, the Glen Hill Elementary Crossing Guard, Cheryl Schirkey, and all of other Glendale Heights Crossing Guards. Thank you for your commitment to excellence and services. Lastly, I want to thank my family for their answering unwavering support throughout this journey. They have been my inspiration to serve the residents of Glendale Heights with passion, purpose, and pride. And again, I salute to my resident of Glendale Heights and all surrounding people who took their time, came today over here, and they supported this mayor, this board, and this village of Glendale Heights. Thank you. Salute all of you. I know it's not time to fight, you know, it's time to love. Peace. So next is a recognition. Okay, next is a recognition of Village elected officials. Mr. Flint, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Board, today is a special day. Today, we get to recognize and honor those that have been, are retiring from the Board, and we get to honor and recognize those that are coming onto the Board. This is the recognition part of those that are retiring from the Board. It's been an honor to serve with each of you. Your presence at the Board meetings is going to be missed. Your presence on the daily phone calls is going to be missed. Your just general knowledge of all things Glendale Heights is hard to replace because institutional knowledge is just that, and it's very hard to replace all that 40 years of experience. So from all the employees and all of the people that have come to work for you, thank you for all your times of service. Thank you for all you've done for the residents and for the village, and you're going to be sincerely missed, and everything you've done is sincerely appreciated. So on behalf of everybody, thank you. Doesn't end everything, though. We got some parting gifts. So I'm going to go, starting with Mayor. Mayor Coker, elected as Village President April 6th, 2021 by the residents of Glendale Heights and has served as Village President for the past four years. Advocated for transparency, fairness, and honesty in local government. Championed the Village's first nepotism policy passionately by the Village Board in December of 2021, ensuring fair hiring practices. Improved the real estate transfer inspection program in collaboration with the Community Development Department, streamlined the home buying and selling process, active community presence including service on the Governmental Agency Partnership Committee and president of the Giving Glendale Heights Charity. Mayor Coker regularly engaged with residents through events, programs, and monthly coffee and chat with the Village President and Board. Recognized for significant contributions to the Village's progress with leadership efforts, expected to, the leadership efforts, expected to positively impact the community for years to come. And I honor that, Mayor, and I want to say I have enjoyed our daily and weekly meetings and our chats. I do get three hours of a meeting back in my life for our meetings, but I'm going to miss those conversations sincerely. I have learned a great deal from you.
Thank you, Mr. Flint. I learned a lot. And as I mentioned, you, first day, you know, my brother, who died, he was police officer in Pakistan, and I found a lot of traits similar to him, and I respected you as my good friend.
Thank you, and you as well.
Sure.
And I still bragging about your wife's dinner the other night, so. It was really good.
Wife is boss, you know.
No, it's really good. She can cook.
I believe in democracy.
No, she can cook.
And charity begins at home.
There you go. So with that, though, we have Mayor. We have for you your first newsletter article that you wrote, right, framed? Right? We have, as we have for everybody, the actual proclamation recognition that was made for you that I read from. We have a glass figure with your years of service on there to the village. And what I think is the coolest and best of all, we have a photo book of your years of service to the village that Public Relations made. I think this is probably the best gift of all because you have memories that are going to last forever and pictures. And I know you take a lot of pictures, but this will look good on your coffee table. So thank you, Mayor, for everything you've done for me. I appreciate all the years of service, and don't be a stranger.
And thank you, Mr. Flint. I learned a lot from you.
So we're just going to leave this to the side so that on the way out, you can pick it up, right? Marie Schmidt. Marie, appointed Village Clerk on March 6th, 2008 by Village President Linda Jackson to fill an unexpired term. Elected as Village Clerk by residents April 7th, 2009, reelected in 2009, '13, '17, and '21. Served for 17 years, witnessing major changes in village leadership, including nine elections, two village presidents, and nine trustees. Presided over 426 Village Board meetings during which 1,569 ordinances and 1,695 resolutions were passed. Deeply involved in civic committees and emergency services, including Complete Count Committee, Youth Commission, CERT, ESDA. She was a sworn member for many years of ESDA. Charter member of the Family Health and Safety Fair Committee. Held key roles such as Village Information Officer, Open Meetings Compliance Officer, Local Election Official. Active and professional clerk organization, including Municipal Clerks of Illinois, Municipal Clerks of DuPage County, International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Longtime Glendale Heights resident and extensive record of community service. Former president of Mark Court School Board District 15. Member of various school-related organizations, including PTA, MPA, Band Booster Club, and Glenbarde East Sports Booster Boards. Recipient of multiple honors, including Illinois State Board of Education, Those Who Excel Award, Glenbarde East Gem of the Year Award, and PTA Life Member Recognition. Marie has quite a career. And your dedication to public service stemming 40 years-ish, from school board to here, 50 years? She gave me the thumbs up, so. That's exactly what can be said for that many years of public service. Hard to replace, Marie. I'm going to miss the soups. I'm going to miss the, I already told Kim, she's got to have a candy supply. So I'm going to miss all the conversations. I'm going to miss, don't forget to send me the track updates on a weekly basis, right? Because I'm going to need those. But for everything you've done for the Village of Glendale Heights, everything you've done for everybody that works here, all the kids you've seen raised and grown and on their own, thank you for everything you've done for the village. And I'm sure there are many parents out there that want to say thank you for helping raise their kid too because that's the kind of mom you were. So for Marie, we have her recognition as well. Again, we have her Years of Service plaque. And again, most importantly, I think, Marie's photo book. Wow, you changed.
This village does it. I'd like to thank everybody for all the support. It has been a pleasure getting to know so many people. And I appreciate everything that you've helped me with. And Doug, I will miss our talks. We have a lot of them, sometimes good, sometimes not so good. But I will miss especially the camaraderie up in the office. Everybody gets along, and I've made some good friends. Thank you, everyone.
District 5 trustee Chester Pocack. Well, it's going to be the last day I got to hear about Green Bay Packers.
That's hell never happened, believe me.
Glendale Heights resident for over 50 years. Elected on April 1st, 2003 to fill an unexpired term of former trustee Vicki Beyond D. Re-elected as District 5 trustee in 2005, 2009, 2013, 2017, and 2021. Founded the Village's Flag Disposal Program in 2004, ensuring respectful military disposal of unservable U.S. flags. Over 10,500 flags have been properly retired through this initiative. Chester's still going to maintain the flag dispenser we have out back and disposal program that we have right outside on the island. So thank you, Chester, for carrying that on. Dedicated presence at Village events, including their graduations, neighborhood watch meetings, union negotiations, grand openings, and community celebrations. Volunteered as cook at fishing derbies, National Light Out, and seasonal breakfast with the Easter Bunny and Santa. The pancakes have not been the same. Pat, you don't have the reach. I'm just saying.
I've heard there are some complaints about the pancakes because I'm gone now, so.
It's all about the reach. Served on numerous committees and commissions. Youth Commission, CERT, DuPage Stormwater Commission, Special Events, Redevelopment Revitalization Committee, Property Enhancement Committee. Leadership roles including Chair of the Citizen Core Council, Army Trail Road Improvement Committee, and Plan Commission. Board Liaison for the Parks and Recreation Committee. Graduate of Citizens Police Academy. Deeply committed to serving the community and prioritizing the needs of the Glendale Heights residents. Chester, again, thank you for all the years of service you've committed to the village. Your institutional knowledge of everything that's gone on in the last 30 years is going to be missed. I'm going to miss you. I know of everybody here who works here, who's worked with you and for you, is going to miss you. So thank you for all you've done for everybody.
Thank you.
And again, we have your recognition, we have your service award, and again, most importantly, we have your photo book. And there are a lot of retirees in the room that are in this book, just so you know. You might want to take a look at it. Because there are a lot of people in this book. It goes back years. Time in history. So thank you, Chester, for all you've done for the Village of Glendale Heights and everything you've done for everybody that's here.
Well, I want to thank you, and I guess my Rolex watch is on its way, right? Being great or something? I don't know. Anyway, I got a couple of things to say. I want to thank everybody. You took a lot of steam out of my speech that I was going to say, but I had a lot of great years in this village. 33 years in the village, 29 were great years, four were not so great. Everybody knows about that if they read the newspapers and watch TV. There was a few things that I'd like to bring up. On the bright side, there's no more drama. I chaired many commissions, committees, et cetera, as you mentioned. It was really appreciated, and I learned a lot. And I mean, I learned a lot from a lot of the trustees, the residents, mostly the residents, and the police department. I enjoyed all the union negotiations throughout the years with the attorneys and the executive staff. And I was a representative of the DuPage Stormwater Commission for six and a half years. That was an honor to me over six other candidates. And now I guess there's somebody going to take my place out of Wheaton, is that correct?
Wheaton Mayor.
Wheaton Mayor, okay.
Childish.
And I got, I'm going to miss lamenting the department heads. And one other thing, I cannot forget our wonderful police department. When we were redoing this civic center, and I was one of the executives, officers, police, a group of other people went to 10 to 12 different police departments to see the pros and cons, what we can do to our department and improve it. And that was an experience I'll never forget. But I had one incident in the Lyle Police Department. If anybody was there, Chief, you probably remember. We were down in the underground garage, and they had a squad car, I mean, a van over there with magnetic signs on it. Well, I went and peeked through their windows, but I couldn't see nothing. They were all blackened out. So me being nosy, I opened the door and a siren went off. I mean, it was loud. And they couldn't turn it off. They had to get somebody from upstairs to come down, turn the alarm off. I felt this big. And one other thing. Thank you for the chief. When we had, one of our officers in Bradley was wounded with her partner. She eventually succumbed to her injuries, and I asked the chief, "Are you going to send a representative to the funeral?" And Chief Pappas says, "Yes." Then he says, in his other breath, "Do you want to go?" I says, I says, "Yes, yes, yes, yes." And I went there to see the funeral. When one of the officers picked me up. Mario. I'll screw his last name, but I won't even say it. But anyway, the auditorium in Bradley was so packed with... I had never seen so many police departments from all the states over there. And it was a cold December windy day. I'll never forget that day. Now, the first thing when we got back to our cars, Mario turned on the heater. And then all the lights went on and all the various police cars and swats around there for the procession lined through the streets from miles and miles. Children, fire department, both sides of the street, standing, saluting, waving flags, American flags. And it is never... I'll never ever forget that. And thank you, Chief, for giving me the opportunity to go. It was just an experience I will always cherish. And thank you for it. And trustee Meritato, I gotta mention you. We both were in 1992 with the Plant Commission. We always had a question, didn't we?
Yes, yes, we did.
Yeah, always. We... Chairman wanted to quit. I think we're gonna jerk. His hand went up, my hand went up. So we had always something to say. So anyway. In closing, I wanna thank everybody for being here today. I wanna thank my wife. We had a bad 2023 or '24 last year. She had two heart surgeries. She's here tonight. She's a little stronger. And for one year, it was touch and go. And don't cry, Virginia. You'll be okay. And she's... She wanted to be sure she was here, so. And all I can say is God bless all of you. Good night, and if not, goodbye.
The only thing I have to say is I have nobody to kick now under the table. Because every time he got out of line at board meetings, I'd kick him to calm him down. So now I...
Now I wear a shin guard.
Mary. Our longest-serving board member. And maybe the youngest at heart.
True.
Right? A resident of Glendale Heights for forty-seven years. Elected on April 3rd, 2001 as village trustee for District 6. Served at the station for twenty-four years on the village board, benefiting residents of both District 6 and the entire community. Passionate advocate for senior citizens, regularly attending events at the Linda Jackson Center for senior citizens. Known for her warm presence, often seen dancing in residence at summer park parties. Brought her experience as a former business owner to the board and was a strong supporter of local businesses. Contributed her leadership and service to several committees and commissions, including Youth Commission, Charity Golf Classic Committee, Golf Club Marketing Committee, Commercial Industrial Commission, Chair of the Ordinance Committee and the village's 45th Birthday Party Committee. Board Liaison to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. Actively involved in local organizations, member of the Glendale Heights Chamber, past president of Glendale Heights Junior Women's Club, former member of the Bloomingdale Township Seniors. Her commitment to the village and its residents reflects her tireless dedication to public service. Mary, you're the youngest older person I know. With a heart of gold. And you've done a lot for me. You've been very kind to me. And I sincerely want to thank you for your dedicated service to the community and all you've done for all the residents of Glendale Heights. Continue to be an advocate for the seniors, right? We all need advocates for the seniors. Continue to be an advocate for them. Please don't let your voice go away just because you're not on the board anymore, right? Because your voice matters. Your voice carries weight. And the seniors need strong leadership. So thank you for all you've done. We appreciate everything you've done. And if there's anything that we can do for you to assist you in your retirement from the board, we're only a phone call away. Reach out. And we're here to help you do whatever it is you wanna do and whatever vision you have for what it is for the senior center or any committee. Reach out and we'll try and make that happen for you. So thank you for all you've done. Your dedicated service to the residents and the citizens has been unimpinged for twenty-four years. So thank you. And we have for you as well. Your recognition. Your service award. And the thickest photo book that we've had to make. And again, there are a lot of people in this room in this photo book through the years. And you got brown hair in here, Mary, so. It goes back a ways. So thank you again for everything you've done. Your commitment and dedication is unwavering. And your twenty-four years on the board probably is not gonna be surpassed. So that's a record that you might hold for the rest of the history of the Village of Glendale Heights. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Doug, thank you for the wonderful words that you told to all of us here. We are greatly appreciated. And it was a pleasure working for you too.
Thank you.
And knowing you.
I would like to say, there you go. I don't have a long speech because I feel that the mind can only retain what the seat can endure. So I'm not gonna talk you long. I just wanna tell you that it's been my pleasure being a trustee for twenty-four years. I've enjoyed it more than you have enjoyed me because you have been wonderful, wonderful residents. I can't say enough. Most of all, I want the seniors to know how grateful I am for all the things that they do and how they always back me up. I wanna thank Emma and Jesse, who have been with me for the last twenty-four years. Emma, I still have our picture from the paper when I was elected for the first time. But it has been a wonderful twenty-four years for me. I thank you all for all your help because you have helped me more than I can ever help you all. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Let me... Thank you for your wonderful words for everybody living. And before I proceed to public discussion, I want to present, you know, that proclamation to my Sikh brothers and sisters. One second. It will take one minute.
Thank you, Mayor Hooker. Board of Trustees, police chief, fire chief, the staff and everybody. Thank you so much for this honor to our community. I wanna mention a little bit about who we are. I don't know if a lot of you know who we are. Sikh Americans. Sikhs are the fifth-largest religious community in the world, about twenty-seven to thirty million people. And our basic belief is oneness. Oneness of divinity and oneness of humanity. And respect for all religions, respect for all people and getting away from the caste system of higher lower and people down at the bottom that nobody cares about. My younger brother, my younger sister, my older sister and their families lived in Glendale Heights. And more than a dozen of my nephews and nieces grew up in Glendale Heights and went to... graduated from Grand Bar North. And they're doing very well. So on behalf of our community, we'd like to thank you for giving us this honor, which is Sikh Appreciation, Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month of April, actually. But now, you know, we still do it for the April. Today, it's May. But thank you again. And there are some posters that you can see our contribution to the world wars, our bravery of our community for the country wherever we were. And our basic tenets are always remember, be mindful of our Creator and work hard to earn your living. Share your good fortunes with the needy and serve humanity without discrimination. Thank you so much and thank you, everybody.
Okay, guys, next, public discussion. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? I believe, and I expect a lot of people to share your thoughts with the board and, you know, all other residents. Anybody? None? Okay. So you have the consent agenda. Mr. Flint, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of April 17th, 2025. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of April 17th, 2025. Three, ratification of the accounts payable listing of April 28th, 2025, amount of $2,126,876.75. Four, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Plan Review and Inspection Services Agreement by and between B&amp;F Construction Co. Services and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Five, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Plan Review and Inspection Services Agreement by and between Paramedic Service of Illinois, Inc., VBA Fire Safety Consultants and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, a resolution of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, authorizing the purchase of patrol rifles through the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Contract. Seven, a resolution authorizing the purchase by the Village of Glendale Heights of replacement Dell computers and docking stations. Eight, a resolution authorizing the purchase by the Village of Glendale Heights of replacement Dell Power Edge R6615 server for the wastewater treatment plant. Nine, approval of the pay request number sixteen to Bowler Construction Company for the water supplies facility rehabilitation, total amount not to exceed $31,111. Ten is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as approved, as presented.
Trustee, my fellow. A roll call, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, none. New business. A number one canvas of results from April 1st, 2025 election for Glendale Heights. Clerk Schmidt, please.
The official canvas from DuPage County for the 2025 Consolidated Election. For Village of Glendale Heights, President Rebecca Gianelli, 1,074 votes. Michael White, 852 votes. Michael Almiveris, 829 votes. James Francis Sullivan, 458 votes. And Ed Pope with a write-in of 32 votes. Glendale Heights Village Clerk, Kim Darlin, 1,339 votes. Cheryl Swanson-Frown, 1,257 votes. Nada Jaza, 477 votes. For the position of District 2 trustee, Mohammed Siddiqui, 216 votes. Margaret Lanagraff, 184 votes. Daniel Patrick Sullivan, 121 votes. Abdul Manan, 117 votes. For the position of village trustee in District 5, Jennifer Matresko, 157 votes. Enrique Arroyo, 127 votes. Zubida Budwani, 44 votes. For the position of village trustee in District 6, John David Bayakan, 248 votes. Tom Barton, 225 votes. Randall Lee, votes, 106 votes. Adil Salam, 77 votes. Ellen Darazaidi, 76 votes. And Dominic Capone III, 52 votes. Congratulations to the winner.
So if we could please have the candidates, Mayor Gianelli and the trustees and clerk, please come up here for the swearing in. And we'll start, Judge, we'll start with the mayor. Judge? Do you wanna stand here and read it? Rebecca, if you wanna recite?
Do you want a family? Any family? Family, come up, family. Have your family with you. Is that a good angle for her? Is that good for her? Okay. If you could please raise your right hand. I, Rebecca Gianelli.
I, Rebecca Gianelli.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village president.
Of the office of village president.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I love it. I love it. I love everything about it. I just need Rebecca to sign. Make it official. You can sign your first signature. There you go. Thank you. Are you all good with me? Thank you.
Mohammed Siddiqui, trustee District 2.
My name is Manarim. I am Abdul. Wa yehanastain.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mohammed Siddiqui.
I, Mohammed Siddiqui.
Having been elected to the office of Village Trustee, District 2.
Having been elected to the office of Village Trustee, District 2.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the County of DuPage.
In the County of DuPage.
Of Forsyth.
Of Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Village Trustee, District 2.
Of the office of Village Trustee, District 2.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
Jennifer Matrasco. For District 5, trustee. You're going to repeat after me. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jennifer Matrasco.
I, Jennifer Matrasco.
Having been elected to the office of Village Trustee, District 5.
Having been elected to the office of Village Trustee, District 5.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the County of DuPage, Forsyth.
In the County of DuPage, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Village Trustee, District 5.
Of the office of the Village Trustee, District 5.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
John Beacon. John Beacon, District 6 trustee. John, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I forgot your cheetah sheen. I, John David Beacon.
I, John David Beacon.
Having been elected to the office of Village Trustee, District 6.
Having been elected to the office of Village Trustee, District 6.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the County of DuPage, Forsyth.
In the County of DuPage, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Village Trustee, District 6.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Village Trustee, District 6.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Kim Darlin, Village Clerk. Yeah, he can get closer. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kimberly Darlin.
I, Kimberly Darlin.
Having been elected to the office of Village Clerk.
Having been elected to the office of Village Clerk.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the Village of Glendale Heights.
In the County of DuPage, Forsyth.
In the County of DuPage, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
The office of Village Clerk.
The office of Village Clerk.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I get a badge?
So now that, so now that everybody has sworn in, we have a changing of the guard. However, that's going to happen after all the cake and cookies that we have here and all the pictures and celebrations everybody wants to take. Right, this is your day, this is your moment. You guys take as long as you want to get your family pictures, get whatever you need done, done. We only have two cakes. Means the cops can't eat until later. But feel free, we have cake, cookies. It's a celebration of our trustees retiring and our new trustees and mayor coming in. So congratulations to all. Thank you for everybody's support to all of them. I'm sure they are all very appreciative and supportive. So pictures, cakes, cookies, not in any particular order, let's go.
We have a motion for the agreement.
Mayor, you want a motion to recess? You're not the mayor anymore, you can't. Done, done.
I would like to call this village board meeting back to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
President Gianelli?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Matrasco?
Here.
Trustee Beacon?
Here.
Thank you. Hi everyone, I want to take a quick moment to pause and connect. Thank you all for staying a little later. Is everyone here? Can you hear me? If you're happy and you know it, clap your hands. I'm incredibly grateful for this opportunity to serve as your village president. This moment means the world to me. And I know I didn't get here alone. I was raised right here in Glendale Heights by two people who know firsthand what it means to serve others. Thank you mom and dad. They taught me the importance of hard work, showing up for your community and doing what's right even when it's not easy. They instilled in me a simple but powerful lesson. When you see a need, you fill a need. I'm so proud to continue their legacy. I also want to recognize the love and support I've received from my entire family, both given and chosen. My sisters, my brothers, my in-laws, aunts, uncles, cousins, friends, neighbors and colleagues who have shown me what it looks like to lead with heart, hustle and integrity and stay grounded in service, family and perseverance. You made a lasting impression on me and I wouldn't be here without you. To my husband and children, thank you for your love, your patience and your unwavering support. You've been my foundation and I love you so much. To Mr. Pujak, Ms. Schroder, Ms. Schmidt and Mr. Coker, thank you for your service to our community. Public service requires time, sacrifice and a deep commitment to others and your work helped shape the future of Glendale Heights. We are grateful for your dedication. To the memory of our former mayor, Linda Jackson, thank you for showing me from a very young age that a woman could lead with strength, grace and resilience. Because of her, I never doubted that leadership could look like me, a girl from Glendale Heights. And I'm grateful for the path that she helped pave. And to this incredible community from day one, you supported this mission and vision to move Glendale Heights forward. You believe that our local government should reflect the voices and the values of the people it serves. You showed up, you spoke out and you stood with me. I'm here because of your encouragement, your trust and your belief in what's possible. As I begin this new chapter, I do so with open ears, open eyes and an open heart. I carry with me the voices I heard on doorsteps, in neighborhood meetings and at kitchen tables. Voices asking for a government that listens, leads with transparency and always put people first. My promise to you is this. I will lead with integrity, collaborate with purpose and remain grounded in the belief that our village works best when every resident feels seen, heard and valued. We have real work ahead, but I believe in what we can do together. We are in this community as neighbors and as partners and I'm ready to get to work. Thank you.
And now I invite the newly elected board members to share their thoughts. Clerk Darlin?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank everybody. My favorite part of this journey here was talking with our residents. One by one, door by door, the friends we made, the friends we spoke to together, the friends me and Jenny made together on door-to-door. I'm here to fill Marie's spot. Hopefully I can do half of a good of his job as she did. But I'm here for the residents. Please continue to call me, to write me, ask me any questions you have. I'm here for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Matrasco?
Thank you. I do want to actually give a big shout out to Chester. You have done an amazing job. There's some big shoes I have to fill and I really look forward to continuing a conversation with you to make sure I can do half the job of what you did. And I do applaud you. And I am also here for the residents. I've made so many friends around, along this journey that I'm looking forward to meeting more as we go along. I do believe in transparency and I am here for my residents, for the residents to make sure that your voices are heard as well. And I can't, I'm not going to say everything that was just stated, but I'm definitely looking forward to the next four years of seeing us make our village what it should be, proud and progressive.
Trustee, Trustee Beacon?
Thank you. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the community for engaging in the electoral process. It could have gone to any one of us, especially in District 6. And I am honored to serve you as your next trustee. Let's also recognize Ms. Schroder for her devotion and dedication as a District 6 trustee. Those shoes are going to be very hard for me to fill. Next, we have a chance to begin a new era for our community. One that can be achieved by finding common ground and valuing our differences. In unity, we make a positive change for all people of our village. I'm excited to work with this board and the staff to get our collaborative goals to be achieved. Thank you and have a good night.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Thank you. As I begin new term, I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to my family, my wife Amber, my son Ali. Thanks for coming, especially for this ceremony from DC. Thank you very much. My brother-in-law Suel Bari, Ms. Farah Bari, for unwavering support during the election whenever I needed. And I also want to thanks to the outgoing trustees, Chester, Pujak and Mary Schroder and Clerk Mary Schmidt. I still remember walking into my very first property enhancements meeting about seven years ago. I was a few minutes late, admittedly. It took me a while to find the room. And the first thing I heard was Chester telling me, "You are late." In that moment, I thought I walked into a meeting with some grumpy old grandfather. But over the years, I came to know the real Chester. Thoughtful, principled and as soft-hearted as an icing on a cake. And then there is Mary Schroder and Mary Schmidt, always full of life, optimism and boundless energy. Mary and Murray brought a spirit of positivity to every meeting and her passion for service inspired not just me, but everyone around them. I have learned so much from Chester, Mary, Murray and I know our community is better because of their service. Let's take a moment to thank them for their years of dedication and commitment. And I also want to welcome newly elected members and looking forward to working with them for a better and progressive Glendale Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. We will resume with new business item number three, a motion to waive first reading on new business item number four. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item number four? Mr. Trustee Light?
Salute. Second.
Trustee Siddiqui, thank you. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Thank you. An ordinance, number four, an ordinance amending and restating the designated depositories for funds of the Village of Glendale Heights to designate certain named municipal officials to act as signatories with respect to bank depositories and other banking transactions and repealing Village of Glendale Heights ordinance 2021-47. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-20. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-20? Thank you, Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Light?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato? Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
The motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-20 is approved. Public discussion? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on any topic?
Mayor, you have, Silgoma should be there as a public speaker.
Yes.
Good evening. For people that just ended their term, thank you for all the work that you've done towards this village. Congratulations to the newly elected members and the village president. Congratulations. I know there are people that were not happy with the results of the election, but we need to give everyone a chance to work together. It's a new administration. We need to see how they work together. All the people of the village, let's try to be non-judgmental and non-opinionated. We do not need a repeat of the past four years. It's time to start fresh. Once again, congratulations to all of you up there representing us out here. And as I know some of you, and I'm getting to know more of you, I hope we all can work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With no executives, oh.
At Pope Wayne Avenue. Pat, this is kind of for you and/or Keith. But on the redesign for the, for the basketball courts, I talked to Keith about it last week from camera. Is that, Keith, is that going to be a redesigned? I've been going there a lot lately, and there's, it's more than just the resurfacing. Is that something we could talk to the Parks Board, the Parks Recreation Board about? Or is that already in your master plan?
Are you talking about adding something to that area, or?
It mean, it needs a few things. I mean, the fence is really jacked up, and that back fence is missing. The seats, there used to be a seat in there, it's gone. Just, so just a couple little things like that.
So as we put that project together, which we haven't begun putting that together, we'll certainly look at all those different options as we go through.
Pat, when's the, when's your next meeting?
We didn't even start there yet.
We have not.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't even start there yet. When we do, we'll, we'll toss that in.
Okay. Should I come to the next park meeting, or?
Well, we scheduled one. We don't, we don't have one.
No, it's May, I'm going to give you the wrong date.
Well, you said resurfacing and all that's not until July, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, July.
So you have a meeting before, right?
No, it's, I think it's May 20th. Hold on, I'm looking quick. Never quick enough. Yeah, May 20th.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, you can come to that meeting, if you want.
Yeah, I just made some notes. I'll bring the stuff. I don't know, like, what the budget's going to be for it. I mean, I'm not talking about, you know, putting in a, you know, Space Jam-style thing, but there's, it needs more than just that resurfacing of the ground.
Yeah, whatever you have, bring it to the next meeting.
All right, thanks.
Hey, everyone, I just want to say, first of all, I'm Ali. I'm trustee Siddiqui, sign in. As someone who lived in Glendale Heights my entire life, I just want to say, to take a moment, not only congratulate my dad, but everyone on this board. I live in Washington, DC, though I may not be necessarily a member of the general public in the sense that I live in Glendale Heights. As a former resident, I just want to commend the work that you guys are all doing. I work in, I work for the Department of State in the Bureau of International Narcotics and Law Enforcement. And I was speaking with, like, Chief Pappas, and kind of working with different law enforcement agencies and state governments and local governments. It's easy to sometimes think, what is the work that we're doing? And the work that you guys are doing, the elections you just fought, are very, very critical, not only to your nation, not only to your local jurisdictions, but also to the nations. So I want to say, as someone who, like, as you guys might say, the big way from Washington, I wanted to say, like, thank you guys so much for the, congratulations on all of your hard works, and thank you guys so much for the work that you're doing as it is imperative, not only to Glendale Heights, but to the United States of America. And never doubt that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Kesar Chishti, resident of Glendale Heights. Just wanted to say congratulations to all the newly elected candidates and just wanted to say that keep up the good work. Whatever has been started by the previous members, continue the work. And then also, any shortcomings of the previous board members, we will look forward to you and make sure that you guys add positive, something positive and add value to the village of Glendale Heights and work for the residents. And no matter who voted for you or not, at this point, I think you represent the whole village. And the goal is to make sure that our village succeeds in, in the end. So best of luck, and congratulations. Best.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? With no executive session this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco.
Yes.
Trustee Beacon.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.